Mayor, we are recording. Thank you.
All right. Thank you and welcome everyone. We got a full house. It's Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. It's just after 5:00 PM and this is the City of Cottonwood Heights. It's our work session and before we move to the first item on the agenda, Riley, I wonder if you would take just a moment and share with those who don't know about Chris Cage, kind of what's happened with, of course, sad loss of his life. I know that he, I think he was on the community council many years ago and I know he was a firefighter for many years here in our city. So maybe just take a minute and share with people?
Yeah. So for those who may not have known, Chris, he was a longtime firefighter here with the Salt County Fire First and with Unified Fire Authority when they transitioned. Spent about 31 years with our department total. Retired September of 2016. I believe he retired out of Station 113. So it's our station at the Snowbird. Spent a lot of time up there as well as within Cottonwood Heights, longtime resident of Cottonwood Heights. Worked at 116 for extremely long, like a long amount of his career, his career spent there. So very active in the community. He did a lot of emergency preparedness stuff based off of, you know, the skills and knowledge he had from working here. One thing too, that he had pretty significant contributions in was our urban search and rescue team. So Utah Task Force One. Those guys were recently on the news for deploying halfway to Louisiana and getting turned around. Once they discovered they didn't need all the help that they had, but Chris was an instrumental part of that as well. He was on that team in the beginning, back in early 90s. And so he spent a lot of time just devoting his career to that kind of stuff, those kind of expertise skills. So he was diagnosed with cancer a couple of months ago. It was pretty aggressive and then just as of late, probably about the last week or so, it got extremely aggressive. Treatment was no longer assisting. It wasn't an option. So he decided to put him on hospice. I believe that was on Wednesday, Thursday, and then Friday this, or yeah, Friday, they decided to continue additional life preserving measures and passed away Saturday. So a small family, luckily he was there with his wife and his, his son. Other families coming into town. He did, he did retire to take care of his wife because her health was not super awesome. So he'd spent the last, you know, all four years nearly caring for her. So we're reaching out to them. We're working closely with the families to make sure their needs are met. Chris, we're kind of waiting to find out what the story is. So he responded to World Trade Center attacks in 2001. Spent several weeks out there with our task force and the, the cancer that he developed is in relation to services potentially provided at the work site there. So we're going through the process right now, working with the World Trade Center Health Program. He looks at all the paperwork, analyzes these situations and then determines if the cancer is truly related to the work down there. We have a high level of confidence that this will all be related and covered by that, which will help provide some additional assistance to his family. Once, once that, once that's determined. So they've decided to hold services next week. So it sounds like it'll be on Thursday, the St. Vincent Church in Holiday, right off of Spring Lane and it's going to be pretty small. They're, they're looking at about 120 people just due to the restrictions from COVID. It's kind of hampered the, the size of the service that they can provide. So if our family there, then we're, we're going to be sending out some official notices for those who want to attend. They may have to institute an RCP process just because of the number of those who may be interested. But following that, they'll be doing a open house at Larkin Funeral Home in Sandy off 106 South and 1940 East. So we'll have more details provided about that, but that, that'd be more open to those who can't attend, maybe that, that service at the church. But we've had a lot of outpouring. There's a lot of people who, who knew and worked with Chris, especially within Cottonwood Heights. And a lot of retired members are really familiar with Chris. So that is kind of interesting dynamic now is a lot of the newer members in the department are they knew of Chris and made work with him a short amount of time, but it's really hitting those who retired and moved on, kind of that same timeframe that Chris worked within the department. So we're doing our best to reach out to them and make sure they're notified of everything that's going on, but definitely, definitely a sad situation, unfortunate, especially if it's kind of linked back towards, you know, 20 years ago and nine 11. That's a it just shows how far reaching that impact has and how many responders are still continuing to struggle with just that out, outcome of working there. So, but we'll have more news on that pretty soon as far as what the World Trade Center organization decides to do, but we're, we're optimistic that that'll be covered.
Well, yeah, well, well, thank you for that update and again for, for our audience. Chris is someone that I think we all knew for, for decades and for his civic involvement, both as a professional and as a resident and just as a citizen before we became a city. I knew Chris well and you know, a real loss to the community and to everyone who appreciated his efforts and especially for the emergency, emergency management group here in the city. I know Stan Rosen's swig even worked with him a lot as well and hopefully we find some way as a city to recognize him as well and we'll look at that, but appreciate the updates going forward and wanted to share that with everyone. So, thank you, Riley. Okay. With that being shared, we have Suzie Becker here, who's the Vice President of Zions Bank, one of the vice presidents, and we want to talk about yeah, go ahead.
I think you need to read your writ declarator or determination first.
I'm, yeah, I'll read that the best I can. I'm ready right now. Yeah. Okay. As per the agenda, there's written determination concerning an anchor location that I'm required to read because we have an online meeting and that determination states pursuant to Utah Code annotated 524 dash 2074, the city's mayor, as a chair of the city council hereby determines that conducting the meeting of the city council on this day at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. Is well recognized that the global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, which has a potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. So that's the determination. Okay. Moving ahead. Matt, you want to introduce Suzie again and we'll turn it over to you to talk about stormwater fee.
Mayor, if it's okay, I'm going to, I'm going to give the introduction, then I'll turn it over to Matt. Does that, does that work for you?
It works great. I'm just trying to follow the agenda, says Matt.
Okay. I'll just give a brief introduction. You remember earlier this year, we met with the council and talked about, or may have even been late last year. I've talked about our stormwater study that we had conducted and presented information on that. We had a consulting group, engineering consulting group that did the evaluation and determined for the most part, many of the needs that we have to address over the next several years. Also, part of that study included the stormwater fee analysis and Suzie came in and, and talked about different scenarios as well related to that. We're going to, we're going to bring you, or we're going to update you on all of that as far as talking a little bit about what we had presented to you previously, but also wanted to go through and at the budget committee meeting, the council member, Michael and council member Bracken were a part of, we talked about three different scenarios and even one preferred scenario option for your consideration. We're going to talk about those tonight with the whole council and then talk about your, what your direction as far as how you want us to proceed in evaluating, moving forward with adopting a stormwater fee. There's a significant, a significant process in that. We want to have public input in that process, but we really want to present options, see if we can get council direction and kind of have a game plan for how we move forward. So I'm going to turn it to Matt. We, we do have some information from a, a recent project that we, road project that we were, we were working on. He's going to show you some information about some of the needs that we have out there. And so Matt, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thanks. I want to share my screen. So I just, if I can get a nod or a thumbs up that I'm you should be seeing the Cottonwood Heights Stormwater PowerPoint. Is that visible?
Yes.
Okay. So what, Mayor and Council, so thank you for being here. And Suzie, like you said, Suzie's here. She's going to have a little bit of the presentation towards the end of this. What I wanted to do was briefly kind of show you some of the things that are going on as far as stormwater is concerned in the city. And a little bit as to why we think it's important that we have a utility fee to help maintain the, this stormwater system. So this is, like I said, it's fairly brief, but it's, I, I think it's pretty powerful to show you some things that are happening. So once again, just kind of making sure that things are working and I'm assuming you can see this. So one of the first things we, we've talked about when we did the study was some of the areas we don't know what's happening. Bottom line, we can't get a camera into our storm drain system in a lot of locations. And the reason we can't do that is because we have a lot of buried manholes. They're buried under asphalt. They're buried in people's yards. They're, they're buried in sidewalks. And when I say buried, they're not accessible. In other words, they've been paved over, they've been concreted over and we estimate we have about 250 of these. And we figured that out, one, by the way the man, by picking different points on the line and trying to follow it in places where the line might turn. We do it through metal detectors and locators trying to find these things. But until we open these manholes, which
Matt, can we quickly clarify that that's something we probably inherited?
Oh yeah, I'm going to get to that. Trust me. I'll, I'll, we'll certainly get to where, how we, yeah, how we got to where we are. So we, that is one of the biggest issues we have right now in the, as far as our stormwater is bottom line. We don't know what we don't know. We, we've done a study. We've looked at it. We feel like we've identified a lot of projects, but this is still the number one project on the list. And like the mayor says, when we came as a city back in 2005, we inherited all of the county's infrastructure and it was old and aged at that time. And there's, oh, there's a lot of different standards that were going on. Various organizations or various directors at the time had their own different standards. What type of pipe, what sizes, what kind of things go in? So, yeah. So to the mayor's comment, yes, we inherited this, this whole system we're about to look at. So what I have here in front of
If you don't mind, just, just because I do remember this, the stormwater fee or the stormwater capital improvements study was one of the first ones that we did. Part of that was we were able to obviously identify some major projects that needed to happen back then. But one of the things that we had also noticed is that we had a lot of places that we couldn't find. And so we actually purchased the camera truck. Yeah. That was within 2006 or seven, just so we could be investigating where these lines are. And that's what you're talking about. When you're saying we can get into a lot, but we can't get into them all yet still.
Yeah, I'll talk about that in a minute. The camera you're talking about, we, we, but what we have and yes, you are correct. And so what, what we've done is we've mapped out, you can see all these red dots. These red dots are where we believe storm drain manholes are that actually do not, that are covered with asphalt. You can see some are buried in soils, the, the yellow ones. So there's about 200 plus manholes that we just do not know what's inside of them. So I wanted to share that with you and and I'm going to show you a project right now that if you can see my cursor, it's circling this area. If you'll recall, last year we had a pipe break, a big six, 48 inch pipe broke and we had a flooding that occurred. And this is the area. So we have been looking at this area, trying to understand what's going on. And when we open, and one of the problems is, is we couldn't get down inside of it with the camera. This is the camera that Scott's talking about. This is what we own. We go down inside manholes and try to find the conditions of pipes and things that are happening. So this is a still photo of Creek Road, the area I showed you on the map. This is what the pipe looks like on the inside. It's a called a CMP or corrugated metal pipe. And you can see here in the back, it also runs into another kind of pipe, which is a concrete pipe. And like I said before, we kind of inherited this system that is, is piecemealed together in a lot of places as things come along because of planning and that and that did not occur in my opinion in a lot of areas before we became a city. So what I wanted to show you, this is the actual camera going down inside this pipe. So we can see what it looks like. So I'm going to start, tell me if, I hope the video is running. Is the video running?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the camera going along. So get down there. And what occurred, just FYI, is there's a big hole right here. You don't see in the pipe where the camera just disappears. We had to call in the sewer district to come help us fish out our camera. Cause there's a big hole in that pipe. So this is something we found. This is one of the conditions. And I'll move forward. That pipe, you can see right here, we marked it in the street. It, that manhole is buried. That's no access to it. And I'll show you what we did in order to find it. This is another video. We've uncovered the manhole and this is what I wanted you to see. When I tell you, we don't know what we don't know. This is one of those things. We started this project. We started uncovering, we wanted to start uncovering manholes on Creek Road and get as far as we could with that. We have some monies, the council, you as a council budgeted for some storm drain work. And we were going to see how many manholes we can uncover on Creek Road as we started. This was our very first manhole that we uncovered. So I'd like to show that to you. What you're seeing now is not inside the pipe. This is actually under Creek Road. You can see the hole.
Can I go see if I have a flashlight? No, my phone flashlight is working. Yeah, my light's on.
Another hole.
Wow. I didn't know it wraps around back that way.
Sorry, I meant to pause it. So this is Creek Road, just FYI, the first manhole we uncovered. This is the hole that's underneath the road itself. So if you've driven Creek Road lately towards the west end of it, you'll notice there's plates on the road. We put those on there until we're able to get in there and get this fixed. Now, all the money that you have allocated for small stormwater projects that are going on, the entire amount is going to be spent in here, just trying to patch this together. So when I tell you we've run into problems, we haven't even left the first manhole and this is what we found. So it's important to us and it should be important to us as a city that we open these, that we're able to open these manholes up and look inside with the camera and see what we're looking at. We're in the process of repairing this, but this is Creek Road. You can see how deep that manhole was. This is the existing surface. It's about a foot of material covering over the top of that manhole. And just also to give you a little, another look at, sorry, let me pull something up here.
Sorry, Matt, before you go.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Can you just go back to that picture? I'm just trying to understand the, the manhole, the first manhole you came to that you haven't left yet on Creek Road.
Let me back up here.
So you're looking for the manhole, you open it up, there's no manhole cover. And then once you get down there, you see multiple holes. Is that, is that
Right. That's correct. There you are. So what you're looking at here, this, this is the manhole. We found it by, you know, metal detecting and seeing where it was. This picture you're looking at right here is actually inside the manhole looking up. There's a pipe that comes into it from this direction from the east into the west that we got inside down here about a couple of hundred feet. And we were able to come into the manhole and look up into that. And that's what, so basically we've, we've located this manhole that you're looking at.
Matt, how were they able to pour the asphalt over that area? I mean, did it ever have a manhole on there to, to support that asphalt?
There's a, there is a, let me find it. If you'll look right, right here, there's a steel lid they just laid on top of the hole. It's not a manhole lid. It's just a steel just laid right over the top of the hole. And that, that happened many, many years ago. This is not a anything recent, but you can see that lid right there or that steel plate.
Like you see by the, the amount of material on top, it's been overlaid numerous times.
There's a few overlays you can see in here. There's a, there was a, it looks like a one inch lift was here. There was the road, a little one inch lift, and then another layer of asphalt's been put there. So it's just been stacked on over the years and hasn't been, hasn't been cleared off. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Michael?
It did. It's slightly shocking. So thank you.
Yeah. And that, and I'm, and it should be, I, I guess I'm going to say it should be shocking. This is Creek Road, one of our busiest of roads and we have this underneath. Now, once we found it, we immediately put plates on top of it. Now, I don't know how long this has been here. I mean, it's been there, I'm sure for years. But now that we know we have a problem, we have to repair it. It's not something we can just walk away from. So we're in the process of getting that taken care of, just FYI, just so you're aware. And I wanted to show you another photo. This is over here by the same, can you see this one as a new photo on the screen?
Yes.
This is in the sidewalk just behind that manhole. This is a pipe down in here that somebody actually came in. Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm, I don't want to give you bad information. Hang on. That's another manhole. You can see the forms that were left in there. Here's, this is the, on the sidewalk portion. This is a pipe down and there's somebody just punched a hole in it and now we're just dropping water through the hole. So it's, it's not designed in any way, shape or form. It's just a, a box and somebody dropped, punched a hole into concrete pipe. So these are the kind of things that we're finding. This is another one, just really quickly. This is over on Carol Drive. This resident initially called because of the road condition, you can see, we went out to investigate and look at this. And in doing so, we kind of pulled these plates back to see what we were dealing with. And this is the manhole inlet on top of why they have those plates. These are little steel grates that are in their driveway. So now we have to come in and repair this and we need to repair it to our standard, which I'll bring this up. Sorry, I should have had these pictures already in front of me. To give you an idea of what the standard should look like, obviously we got to put lids on this. But these are the inlets that we, that, that we put in the streets now comparing that to what is here. This is another fix that's going to go run in the area of around $6,000 to repair this properly. So like I said, it's, there's just a lot of different things that are out there that we're having to deal with. And I wanted you to be aware of it as we lead into what Suzie's going to talk about here in just a second. So any, sorry, I'll back up. Any questions on some of the things that I've shown you so far?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mayor, is normally when you have building permits and different construction projects, there's a standard procedures and I guess over corrections and different things that people have to do. Was this a years and years and years of of no follow-up as far as any standards or what happened here?
This in particular?
Well, all of these projects, all these manholes that are covered. I mean, it sounds like it's a myriad of, of usually when you build something, it's, it's pretty, it's watched quite carefully.
I think it's a, like I said, I think it was an inherited issue. I'm pretty, I'm sure it was an inherited issue. And I, I don't want to point fingers at anybody or anything, but when it's not visible, it's not really a, a if it's not visible, out of sight, out of mind is what it boils down to. It's a very expensive funding prospect to do something like this. It's just a little bit kind of pushing it down the road, if you will. To me, I think it's been kind of just pushed down the road and here we are. And I'm not, and I am saying it is like council member Michael said, it is somewhat shocking to see, at least that's the first one. Now, I'm not saying the rest of them will look like this. The rest of them may be just fine at the end of the day. They may just be just perfect and not have a problem. But when we come to you and say, these are the projects we have. This was our very first one.
I, I would note that prior to your being around, Matt, I know that we had identified a little over a thousand manholes that needed to be raised and we've raised a lot of those, various overlay projects and what, if we're down to the last 200, they're probably going to be the more complex ones rather than the easy ones that are just under maybe an inch or two of asphalt that are fairly easy to raise. But it's been a long going process. That camera, I know they've identified, I believe it's over a thousand different. And if we're down to 250, that means we probably raised 800 or so.
I have a quick question for those that have been on the, the council longer. Do we have any recourse with the county? Any terms of warranty?
My, my understanding, and again, I have been on as long as Scott, but I can remember when the issue was raised with our engineer department five or six years ago, and the camera was bought before I got here as well. And they, the first thing was to try and better understand what it is we're dealing with. And so they bought the camera and had the camera go down everywhere that it could. And it, it demonstrated like Christine says, really a, a major, major problem. And then we, we talked about it and we found out by talking to the cities, it's a pretty common scenario across the valley, especially if a city has any maturity. There's no recourse back to the county. That's why most cities have instituted a stormwater fee. There was just not an appetite to do it at that time. And I think over the last couple of years, since we, this group's been together, we've recognized that we need to do something. And so we keep talking about it. I think the plan was do it this last budget cycle and get things going. Then the pandemic hit, so it's, it's time to take some type of action. If you look at the public survey that came out in 2019 that we did as a city, our constituents said, I think it was 60% said, well, yeah, if you're going to do it, but do it with your existing budget, don't increase taxes or fees. So we need to, to talk about that. And but back to Tally's question, no, I don't think we have any recourse whatsoever to the county for many, many years of lack of maintenance in certain areas. But as, as Matt just said, too, other areas of the city are in decent shape. But we really still don't know the full magnitude of what's under a lot of those things. We just need to get some resources set aside and start attacking it because like our road maintenance, it's going to be an annual ongoing effort for years and years, in my opinion.
Yeah. I, I would note that there's, I know that when we did the Bengal project overlay, we did a lot of that type of stuff. I believe at the time, Matt, you said there was 144 manholes on Bengal Boulevard. It's nice to see that Bengal does not look like Creek with a whole bunch of, that are still buried. As we have been able to, we've, we've made improvements and we've raised manholes as we can, but it is a significant project.
To answer, to answer to that, yeah, there's a lot of things have been done. I'm not saying they haven't. But there's obviously a lot that needs to be done. And then the, the camera was the great investment from the get-go. You can see everything in here has been mapped as much as we're able to map it. The only problem is, once again, we're not sure of what we're The only problem is, once again, we're not sure of what we're actually dealing with inside of. Uh, some of these things. And like I said, different. Different pipe types, you can see it right here, different types of pipe and you saw the video. There's the big hole. You didn't even, you can't even see it until you drive over it. Now you can see it pretty clear. Now that we've seen it drive over the top of it. So.
Matt, back to Tally's question, when you, you talk of Creek Road, it's my understanding on Creek Road. That the city boundary goes right down the middle of the road. Does any other jurisdiction have any?
The, the storm drain line, Sandy has some storm drain. We share some storm drains with Sandy in there, um, but a lot of the, the storm drains themselves are sitting on our side of the, uh. Our side of the road. And, uh, if you'll look at. Sorry, I'm backing up again. Yeah, a lot of these things. This area will drain over into the creek, coming down off the hill will drain into it. But a lot of these belong to us. You can see them inside the city boundaries. So, uh, yes, they're ours. We've, we've, uh, I've talked to the county and, uh. On some other projects because we shared, actually shared jurisdiction with the county. And Sandy and us on some of Creek Road.
Yeah.
So we're working in that regard, but this particular one we're talking about is 100% our, uh, stormwater line, so.
Well, okay, today is information and of course. I, I would hope that somewhere at some point. There's a plan, just like we have the five-year plan on, on road maintenance. There needs to be. A plan for stormwater improvements. Uh, where are we on? Creating an actual plan that we can tie numbers to when we start talking about fees?
We have, we've identified and, uh, Councilmember Brack had mentioned at the beginning. When the city was incorporated, one of the first things they did was the Stormwater Master Plan. And that occurred and a lot of projects were identified and, and so a few, few of those projects were done. And taken care of. Um, we updated the master plan last year. Uh, to identify those projects as well as any new ones we have. So we have a list of projects. Um, and we have a master plan. We haven't laid it out. Uh, at this point in our fi, you know. Like we've done with the, uh, streets. We haven't laid it out that way yet. We've identified all the projects. And we've identified some years in which we feel like they should be it. But we've also put a few of them in priority. And one of the first priorities is uncovering these manholes. And getting in and cambering the whole system again and, and, uh. Cleaning the system so we know exactly what we're dealing with. So yes, Mayor, we have, uh, we've gotten to that point and I think Suzie's gonna. Talk a little bit about that here in just a second.
Well, let's move, let's move on to Suzie. I know time's running quickly and I think no one's surprised by. I may, I'm surprised by the magnitude of what I see on the Creek Road, but I don't think anybody's surprised with the understanding that stormwater. Issue is, is a high priority and it's something we've been talking about for a couple of years and.
Yeah. Okay, so Suzie, Suzie's joined us. I'll try to work the slides. Suzie, you're just gonna have to say next, so. There we go.
Okay, well, thanks for letting us, um, work with the city. We've enjoyed it. And Matt. Has laid wonderful groundwork of why we need to look at. Um, rates. He, and that's the first point here is to pay for some of this deferred maintenance, repairs, capital costs in our system and. To really know.
Suzie, you're bouncing in and out.
In the system. Two, you know, issues in mind. We wanted to do several things. One, we wanted to minimize the impacts to ratepayers. While the same 80 days cash on hand, um, for good management practices, especially so that you would always be able to. Easily borrow if, um, for borrowing, uh, we want sufficient debt coverage ratios if we issue bonds. We wanted to see what cities around you, um, were doing with their rates and we'll show you some here. And then they wanted the fees to be pretty simple and straightforward with not too many variations so that it would be easy for your city to. For your ratepayers, your residents to understand them and easy for the administration, your staff to collect them. Next. Okay, um, Matt hinted that these projects, you may have seen the detailed list. Seventy-seven projects are identified by the city's engineers. Total cost in today's dollars are 19 million. And of course, as they go out year after year, if we are not gonna do them all in year one, the cost goes up with inflation every year. But one of the biggest, um, challenges with looking at rates here is that we have some major upfront costs. Of about 4.2 million associated with this cleaning camera to figure out what is going on. So how do we get some money upfront right away to do that? So let's look at our options. Um, let's go down to the next slide.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that coming up? It's not coming up on mine.
Do y'all see?
Now it is. Now it is. So here's what you're doing now. Um. You're covering your cost with that $600,000 costing you annually for your stormwater costs and you're paying for it from the general fund. But as you can see, that's not sufficient to cover all of these needs that Matt has identified where you're behind. Um, it only really covers the operating costs, sweeping and cleaning. And we don't have funds available for current costs. So let's go to the next slide. Okay. One last slide before we talk about the options. Um, when we charge these rates, these options that we're gonna look at. How are we gonna charge them? Well, generally, a single-family home, all. Um, residential units will pay the same amount per month. They're called an ERU or an equivalent residential unit. But what then do we do with non-residential, with commercial? Um, or, you know, with schools, churches, they can all pay. So, um, the engineers measured your average impervious surface. On a residential unit and then we'll just do that proportionately. For commercials. So if we had 10,800 square feet of impervious surface. For a commercial property, that would be two ERUs and you can do a portion thereof as well. That's just the easy one to do in your heads. Okay, on the next slide, we're gonna start talking about three options that we looked at for the city. The third one is our preferred option, but let's, let's start here and we'll show you the differences between them. So what if we were to start with an initial monthly. Rate of $6 per ERU for stormwater. After, to cover the inflation costs that would be associated with operating costs. And those construction costs that we identified, those are gonna go up as well. We would issue $6 million of bonds, um, at the beginning here near, in 2022. And we would continue to transfer $600,000 from the general fund to the stormwater fund for the first two years. And we do $300,000 per year thereafter. Now, this is the lowest monthly rate option that we're gonna show you. And so you're gonna have to have that bigger transfer from the general fund. And a little more issuance in bonds if you're going to cover these costs because you've got lower rates. So let's look at option two. With this one, we're gonna go to the other end of the spectrum and we're gonna do the highest. Monthly rate. And that one is gonna be $9 per ERU and then the third option's gonna be somewhere in between. Um, with this one, we also recommend 3% annual rate increases each year. We're seeing lots of communities doing this now. It's just easy to build in the ordinance at the time and, um. It just, it, it just helped. With this one, no bonds are issued and you would. Have no annual contributions from the general fund. It does delay a little bit when you can maybe do some of your projects. The timing isn't quite the same. But it does keep you from having to issue bonds or pay from the general fund. Finally, option three, next. Slide. This one is kind of a blend. It's, um, 750 a month per ERU. Um, like these other two options, it shows a 3% annual rate increase each year thereafter. But we don't have to issue bonds, but the general fund still has to contribute. Rather than doing this $600,000, like with the low rate for a few, few years, we only do $300,000. But we continue doing this year after year. That's about half the amount that you're now paying, um, from the general fund. Um, next slide. So this is sort of the recommended one. It's somewhere in between and you can see how this rate puts you neatly. In, um, where some of the other communities are, are located in terms of their rates. Um, you can see Salt Lake charges. Well, you would be, um, about at 750, you'd be right around Leighton and Orem. The $9 range would have you up close. Sort of Draper, um, Salt Lake City, um, you can see if, uh, or more stormwater rate is an increase by 65 cents every year. Through 2024, that was one that was just recently done. But let's go to the next slide. And it's a little easier to see. It's the huge gamut here. Assuming option three where initial monthly rate is 750 per ERU. With annual increases of 3% thereafter, you can see where you fall in here. Um, with the others, Pleasant Grove is high. If we had Park City on here, it's actually the highest that I've seen. Um, it's even higher than Pleasant Grove. It's the only one I'm aware of that's higher than Pleasant Grove. And you can see about where you're coming in here. Do you have any questions on these?
When did Mill Creek, uh, institute their fee?
So my understanding is that Mill Creek is in the process of doing this right now and I don't know if it has been enacted or just proposed. Do you know, Tim?
I just see it on your list as well.
I know, I know Mill Creek and Holiday are in process. I, I am. I can verify they have actually adopted it, but I know they are in process.
That's what I thought too. We put Mill Creek in, Holidays, we weren't sure what they were doing.
Questions from the council. Obviously. This is a, a major discussion that, uh, deserves a lot more. Um, time that we have today, but I think it's critical that it, it stays on our agenda going forward.
I do have a, a, a question probably for Tim. I, I had initially understood that there was a. And if, if we opt to do this, um, there, there's a, a, a few months or some time that we would need to. Get everything set, established and pass an ordinance before it could actually start. Being collected. I was under the impression it would be like an October's. Start to get it started in January or again, like kind of a, a three-month delay there. What is the implementation? If we did move forward, how long would it take us to actually get something up and going?
Well, I think, I think a big part of the implementation process would be going out to the public. And educating the public on the need and on what the proposed. Uh, rate would be. And that would be, um, a few months to move through that process. At the same time, we would be evaluating. How we would look at the billing. We've already been looking at that with Scott Jurgis and options with doing it in-house, um, versus having. Like Rocky Mountain Power. So we'd be working through that, but I think that implementation and adoption would. Likely, um, be through the end of this year if you, if you wanted us to proceed through that process. And then we would look at, uh, the beginning of the year to implement that.
Another big question I have, uh, with looking at those options, is the question of bonding or not? Because of the increased cost of construction, is there an economy that's, uh, achieved by? Even if we go less fee initially to allow us to bond, to give us a larger impact. On the problem by having the bond proceeds.
I can just speak to one, um, you know, interest rates are very low. I'm not trying to sell you on bonding, but the interest rates are very low now. And you would have, you could get more money upfront perhaps and that could get going on more of these projects initially if you were to bond upfront.
What do those bonds look like? How long and what kind of, uh? Payment are you looking at for about how much money? Do you have any idea? Give us, and I. I'm not gonna hold you to it, but just a, a rough idea.
Um, sure, we, um, put them all in for 20-year bonds, just for the, for the sake of. Um, yeah, analysis. You know, the payment's gonna depend on how much you decide for, to bond for. If you were to bond for, and, and that, and you really don't have a, a revenue stream here. Um, established already, so you're gonna have to back this somewhere else, but backstop it, but with about, if you were to do about six. Million dollars, um, a year, or six million, I'm near, uh, for your bond. Um, you would have bond payments of just over $400,000 a year. And I think it depends a bit, bit how, um, you can work to structure the bond and how much. Of this, Matt really feels you need to get done in the short term and then your term.
Well, Matt mentioned that for me and figure, that's what I'm saying. And, and, and part of it is really understanding. How serious is the problem? And, um, if it's as serious as people are saying, for, I don't know if you have to validate it further by. I, I'm just concerned about kicking it down the road further. If there's some things that really need to be done and we don't have sufficient cash to do it. Is bonding the answer or? Do we feel by just implementing a fee and having the cash flow, we have enough to do it on an annual basis? Just with the repairs we're doing. So that's, that's the discussion I think still needs to be. I haven't taken a position. I just. Just wanna understand the options better and what's the best solution? So we're not kicking it down the road any further and we don't have any surprise that we, that we can't address or. We can be more proactive like we are on the roads right now.
Mayor. What is the, I'm sorry. Revenue stream on the $6 or the $7 fee? What's the net on it, Suzie?
All right, what was that question again?
If we do a $6, a $7, a $9 fee, what is the revenue? The net revenue we could expect? You're looking about a $400,000 payment, but what's the net revenue that we would see at those various, uh, billing rate?
Okay, so, um, if you're looking at. Collecting $6. Your revenue is gonna give you about one and a half, 1.6 million. Uh, well, that's counting the transfers from the general fund. Sorry, that's only getting you, that's another 30,000. That's getting you to about. 1.3 million a year, 1.2, 1.3, building up to 1.4 with your 3% annual increases in your. You know, just a little bit of growth in ERUs, more paying as well. Then you have another 300,000 we have transferring in from the general fund. We had 600,000 in the first two years. On the $6 option and then 300,000 after that. Your operating expenses in comparison are about seven, uh, you know, it changes from year to year, but. Goes up at 760,000. And anywhere between, starting here at about 720 up to 800,000 over the first few years. So that does give you some money to work with. Um, it's just, when you look at your capital costs. It's just not enough is your issue. You have huge capital costs. That are ranging and it depends when you put them in, but you've got at least a million dollars a year if we just average them. To 1.2 million in capital costs. And if we wanna do the, you know, cleaning camera, the 4.2 million upfront. Um, then you probably need to bond to get more money upfront to do that.
Hey, thank you. Tally, you had a question?
Yeah, a couple of items. I was gonna first ask if there was a way to, we could cost-effectively ask the public their sentiment about. Uh, the, the fee versus bonding. Um, but it almost sounds like bonding is inevitable. I feel like we owe it to the public to give them a monumental apology for such an epic failure on our part. Yes, we inherited an absolute nightmare, but it's been 15 years and we've done nothing.
I, I don't think we've done nothing.
Okay. It appears to me that we've done not enough. Not enough, not even close to enough. And so. The reality is anything we impose on the public is gonna be a regressive tax. It's gonna hurt those on a fixed income and those with low income. And we're going into an economic recession, so it's, I feel like we owe them a huge apology.
Well, right now, uh, let's look at what, what actions we wanna take and that discussion needs to continue, but, uh. It's, it's something that every, you know, e- every city's dealing with and we're dealing with it as well and. And we've been talking about it. Now it's time to, you know, it was, we were gonna do it a year ago, but then the pandemic, there's always something that tends to interrupt, but now's the time to. Determine how we wanna proceed.
Real quick, I didn't see holiday on there.
They they're they're in discussion right now like we are to determine how to do it. And they're very similar. Yeah, probably could mirror much what we're dealing with. But Tal, you asked a question about public sentiment. Tim, you were talking about obviously a need to have a public comment on or public hearing on anything we propose to do.
Well, I I think that we would, we would look at a couple of at least two public open houses to educate the public on what is being proposed. We may even want to, I know Mill Creek is put and we can show what they have done to educate the public, but they put together a video related to what they're proposing to market what they were doing to help people understand in their city what's happening. So what we would do, I think, is have the two public open houses and then maybe do other things to educate the public on what is being proposed before you make a consideration of of this later on.
Which is important because again, in 2019, we asked our constituents how they would like to handle anything like this specifically stormwater and they, I think it was 60% said they did not want to have a national fee. They wanted to have it dealt with with our current tax structure, but I think we have more information now and need to get it all out there for them to respond to.
Susie, I've got a question for you if I can. We, some of the people live on lanes that they have to take care of their own stormwater issues. Ironically, the lane I live on is probably 40 plus years old. And we have an issue where we have infrastructure that we have, we're going to have to basically face, face the music on taking care of it because we've got some problems down there. Is is the, is this across the board paying for the whole city? Has to pay for both, like in our situation, we're going to have a substantial cost in taking care of our lanes problem in the stormwater. So is there any any recovery on that? How does that work?
You know, at this point, you're right. It's just the assumption that everyone would pay the same. It's the assumption that everyone at some point dumps into this system of capital facilities. And so there is no credit given for the fact, I mean, if you detain water for a while, it will still go through the system and it still puts the wear and tear on the pipes at some point. Was generally the thought, I think that it's probably more a question for the engineers.
Yeah, just
Oh, go ahead, Matt.
Sorry. Oh, well, I'm just saying it is. That's one of the, that's one of the things we need to check on the checkbox to determine, you know, who who has the impacts to the system. That is, I mean, like Susie said, we went with the blanket ERU at this point. There are locations in the city where there is no impact to it. But at the same time, it's something the council will have to make that decision. How they want to distribute that fee to to who it would be. I mean, that's still, that's getting down into really down into the weeds on that. But it's something that will need to be addressed.
Okay, we're running short on time and I don't mean to cut anybody off, but Tim, what obviously staff and and of course our budget committee last year and with Suzie, we've been talking about this. What's our next step? I know one of them is to get a better handle on what our cost outcome would be over the next three to five years or some strategic understanding of what that would be, but what's our next step? You're muted, Tim.
You're muted, Tim.
If the council wants to move forward with one of these options and our recommendation and the budget committee talked about option three is the one that we could pursue. If you want us to to pursue that option, we would start the process of getting public input with with a goal for your consideration in a few months for adoption of a stormwater fee. And so we'd like your direction. Do you want, if you want more information, we can bring it back to you at the next meeting. But these are, these are the options that we can look at. We feel like the $7.50 option with the components of that is is something that's reasonable. We'd like your direction on that. And if if you give us that direction, we'll start moving forward on the public input processes.
I'm not, I personally not comfortable with option three in its entirety. I like options or pieces of it, but how does rest of the council feel?
I'm sorry, maybe my computer's frozen, but I just see the bar chart. Is there a summary slide with the options?
Matt, can you move that to show the three options?
Well, the options in my, I don't know if I'm muted. The option, this is option three. I, do you want me to go back to the first one and?
Well, the first first one has bonding. The next two do not have bonding.
I thought we had, I thought when Suzie came last time, there was a slide that had the three options or side by side.
We don't, we don't have that in the slide deck right here.
So I'm going to propose to council differently that in our next meeting, we talk about these options in more detail and we're running out of time today and I don't want to make a quick decision without making sure everybody's comfortable. But
As I recall in the budget committee, we went with this one because it put us kind of in a mid-range with the other cities. It did avoid bonding and gave us a little bit of relief in the general fund. I thought that the $9 was way too high and I didn't think the $6 went far enough to, I mean, committing a good chunk of that revenue to bonds right up front didn't strike me as the best either, but I definitely think we should go out. This is a solution. This isn't a this is something that we've discussed. We've done capital improvement projects. We have been working on the Storm Day system annually since incorporation. The allegation and the narrative that somehow we haven't is false. It has been dealt with, but at some point we have discussed stormwater fees. Up until a few years ago, we had plenty of general fund monies available to fund that and in some way or another. We're getting to where that is no longer possible. And this is a this is one way that at least the public would know that if they're paying this fee, that that's going to this specific project. And that's the improvements that they would see. And that's what the public open houses could demonstrate.
And Susie, what's the current interest rate on general obligation bonds? Well, not general obligation bonds, revenue bonds?
On revenue bonds? And you know, it depends if you raise from city to city, but we have been seeing those between two and a half and 3%, I think. But I will check with the bankers and get back to Tim on that and send you that number, but they're pretty low.
So again, counsel, I I would suggest unless you would like to move quickly quicker than I am, but in our next meeting, have a little more discussion on these three options in any modified modifications to any of those. And I, yeah, I'd like to better understand the bonding option. Yeah.
It's certainly worth the discussion, I think.
I'm just saying discussion. I'm not taking a position. But if it's, if if the issue is as severe as as we're understanding it is, you know, jumping on it with something more substantial might be a prudent strategic move if bonding rates are low and the cash flow is there to handle the debt service, but at the same time enough cash flow to carry us on outside the bond payment. But again, I just, I'm just thinking out loud, but.
We're the same place we've been multiple times in the past. Well, do we actually do something where we're going to take it on, take the bull by the horns and actually work on it and make improvements like we did with the pavement management? Or do we continue to do what we've done in the past and do the best that we can? And keep up as best that we can. That's kind of the decision point.
And I think we want the public feedback on those options as well. And as you're saying.
I guess what I was going to say is that, I mean, it's a, it's a risk analysis. And if we're at a tipping point where we're going to see more cost by not doing something, that's a pretty compelling argument. So I just, I just like to maybe hear that argument from Matt and your team, just because I think that's going to be important in in the open houses to portray that if that's the truth.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that hits it on the head, that risk analysis and the financial impacts of these options as far as hitting the 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 costs associated with all those major improvements. So Tim, is that enough direction to bring this back for these options at our next meeting?
Yes.
Go on on it?
Yes.
Any any final comments? Susie, thank you very much.
Thank you. I've loved working with the city.
And we'll excuse you and want to thank others for staying with us, specifically Mr. Curtis and Mr. Allen. But before we move to them, just real quickly, we need to review the business meeting agenda and then we'll we'll change staff reports around a little bit and talk about lobbyists first. Before we do that, I want to review the business meeting agenda with you real quickly. We have the welcome, we have the pledge. We have beautification awards that we do each year and Mike Johnson, I'm sure you're prepared to do that in the work session.
In the business meeting, yeah, I'll introduce each district and then each winner has been invited. I don't know if they will all be attending tonight. But I think when I introduce them, I'll turn some time over to the respective council member to say a few words and then have them on and then we'll distribute the certificate in the coming days.
All right. Thank you, Mike. You don't have citizen comments. I know we've got a lot of people who've signed up to comment once again, so as per our code of ordinances will maximize comments up to one hour. Hopefully it's less than that, but we'll go up to an hour. And we'll encourage people to stay at two minutes. Is everybody okay with that? That's what we did last time. All right, then we have some staff quarterly reports. Scott will give us an update on our budget and revenue and hopefully those numbers are looking better. And we have public works quarterly report and then we'll have a quarterly report by our police department. And then we have two action items. One is we have an appointment to the Arts Council. Tammy Ross, who wants to introduce that real quickly and tell us who she is?
Yeah, I will do that. We've included the information about Tammy. I had the opportunity along with Paula and Anne to talk with her electronically. She has a great background in the arts. She is the owner, director and producer at the Midvale Main Street Theater. And we think she's going to really add value. She's also served on committees, not in our city, but in other locations. I think she'll be a great addition to the Arts Council. You can look at her resume and information in the packet.
Any questions about that appointment? I read it real quickly and it looks like impressive resumes. We're glad to have her. The next action item is a resolution approving entry into an agreement for land use appeals hearing officer. I understand this has to have certain qualifications. So Tim, you want to introduce that as well?
I'll let Mike actually, Mike Johnson.
Yeah, this is our appeals hearing officer. It's the contractor position that hears applications for variances and appeals of land use decisions by both staff and the planning commission. The the criteria that are used to review those types of applications are pretty strict. Oftentimes passed down from state legislation. So we look for someone that's that's very familiar with land use law and municipal authority within land use law. And Paxton Gaiman has been the previous contract. He's a land use attorney. He actually used to be a resident and was the chair of the planning commission a few years back and has since moved out. But but he's, he's been our hearing officer the past few years. We do two to four of these applications per year. So we don't do them very often, but it's very important that the the hearing officer understand the criteria with which to review these these types of applications. And Paxton has shown a a really high proficiency in doing that. So we recommend just continuing his contract. We're not recommending any changes to it, just extending the the next deadline.
All right. Any questions with that resolution? The council? All right, hearing done. Let's move back to our work session agenda. And because of the patience of Mr. Allen and Ms. Nate and Mr. Curtis. Scott, you want to, not Scott, Tim, you want to introduce the subject of lobbyist contracts?
Yeah, so I'll let you refer to my memo related to the services these two firms provide. I think they're very critical services. GTC focuses on funding issues. Capitol Hill Advisors focuses on advocacy and bill tracking. I've worked with them now for the last couple of years and think they do important work for us, keep our legislators informed, provide important information to us and seek money for projects in the city. So we have letters for them that they provided regarding their services. You can review that. We feel very good about continuing having their services be part of the city. We would bring that back to you in the next meeting for your consideration. I will note that their contracts have expired, but they, that's why we're bringing this to you. Two years ago, they amended their their contracts. They reduced their cost by $6,000 each. And so that was part of something that you adopted as a council. And we would propose that they keep that same cost, but they can have that conversation with you. So that's my introduction. I'm happy to answer questions or you can talk or have them explain their services.
Well, I just want to personally offer both Mr. Curtis and Chantel and Brian, my appreciation. I've worked with both of them over the last year and I think if anything are affecting this and our ability to have access to particular individual stuff is has been excellent. So I'm personally more than comfortable continuing, but I'll open it up to the council for any questions, comments of to Mr. Curtis or to Brian, Alan. Any comments, questions from the council?
My my comment is we, I mean, my initial back in the day thought about having a lobbyist for the city. I wondered about it, but over the years I've seen the the benefits both from a policy standpoint. We did receive a letter from the Utah League of Cities and Towns Director commenting of the use having our lobbyists up there, working with them on getting good policy passed for the cities. We've obviously had a lot of luck. Well, we've, we've had a lot of hard work. Let me put it that way in securing different funding sources. Mr. Curtis and Mr. Allen have been very good at bringing in fundings and grants for various projects as we've had in the city and I've since changed that tune. I'm very, I'm very supportive of the work they do. It's very good to be informed and to have our voice be able to be communicated directly up on the hill during the session.
Tim, how accessible have they been for you?
Very accessible, especially during the session. I'm meeting regularly with them and receiving daily input from them on where we're at with with bills and with other things. So I think they've been good.
Notice how accessible Greg Curtis is right now.
And I'm doing it as safely as possible, mayor. Still got my seatbelt on.
I'm glad of that and appreciate your work just this last week on your behalf and on some things we've been doing. So thank you.
I'm happy to do it. I've, I've enjoyed. You won't, you'll just get to look at the side of my face because I'm going to still keep watching the road if that's all right. But I've enjoyed working with the city for the past several years. Was and Brian Allen and myself were elected to the legislature together in 1994 and were seatmates for a couple of years. So I have a great respect and enjoy working with Brian a lot. He candidly is much more diligent in tracking and communicating. I have focused primarily on a lot of funding issues. And as they always like to say, why does the legislature wait until the last day to make all the important decisions? And as they always like to say, why does the legislature wait until the last day to make all the important decisions? It's because they can't wait any longer. And most of our funding things, we spend a lot of time trying to educate legislators and then we have no idea if we're going to be successful until the last three or four days of the session. And so, but we have had some good successes. Brian and I did a great job of educating the legislature on the money that's appropriated through UDOT for buying ground for future canyon transportation, parking stations, as well as some money for parking structures at the mouth of bigger Little Cottonwood Canyon or, and where it's determined in the EIS that UDOT is currently doing. So I've enjoyed working with Brian and with Cottonwood Heights, Tim, Mayor Colomore, Mayor Peterson, council members. So I'm happy to just answer any questions if you have any.
Oh, thank you, Greg, and I appreciate that. Brian and Chantel, any comments?
No, we feel the same way about Greg. He's great to work with. He and I have a long and somewhat sordid history together, so it's been a lot of fun. And I'm thinking while he's out driving around, you ought to be surveying your storm drains. But no, it's an honor to represent the city. Our city has a great reputation on the hill. People on the hill respect what we do as a city and we've been innovators and groundbreakers in a lot of areas. And I think that's appreciated. And I think the legislature feels like we're one of the cities out there where they don't really have to micromanage or try to micromanage what we do. And that's really a testament, I think, that we and Greg do to kind of convey to legislators what's happening in our city. He's been real positive and it's just a joy to, it's a joy to work with the city and represent the city.
Well, thank you to both of you again. Council members, any comments or questions of our two lobbyists? Christine?
Yep, I just, I just want to say thank you. I've been able to work with both Brian and Greg. And I don't, I think you're batting average, at least for my request is almost 100%. And I don't think every city is that lucky. So I do appreciate all the work that you do for us and when we call, you listen and meet with us. So I certainly appreciate that. And I know that my district appreciates the great work you both did in securing the 13 million in parking funding for the mouth of Big Cottonwood Canyon. So thank you.
Hi, again, I think there's a lot of the good examples. As Christine just mentioned on 13 million or work with UDOT on the Ferguson Canyon overflow is another big one. And Greg, appreciate that. And just the day-to-day ongoing monitoring of bills with Chantel as well. So Chantel, we appreciate you as well. So thanks to both of you as team members. And we'll excuse you, Greg, if you don't get in an accident. And Brian and Chantel, yeah, I'm sure you have something else you need to do as well. You're welcome.
Off to another meeting. Thanks.
Thank you both. Thanks.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor, councilman, councilmembers.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, everyone. All right, time is running a little bit short, so time moves quickly. The next item is the Bonneville Shoreline Trail Access Plan. This is something that generated a ton of comments over the last several months. And I know Christine and I met with a constituent and at one of the proposed trailhead access points. And that was enlightening. And I read many of the minutes from the planning commission, which I represented a good cross-section of the feelings, especially in District Four. So Mike, let you introduce it.
Thanks, Mayor. Like you referenced, this is the Bonneville Shoreline Trail Access Master Plan. I'll pull it up here. While I'm doing that, it's like I gotta fix it here. This is a plan for many years since probably prior to City Incorporated. We've, we've had a pretty good idea of the conceptual alignment of the Bonneville Shoreline Trail itself. What we haven't had is a, is a good plan for how to access that trail. So with the $1.5 million in grant funding we received from Salt Lake County for the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, we used a small portion of it to, to consult with Blue Line Design and, and create this access master plan. And this is something that would guide access, would tell us, you know, what kind of access we need, what trailhead should look like, how they should be designed, how many of them there should be in accessing that future Bonneville Shoreline Trail. Because having a trail is great, but being able to access it is, is what makes it really the success that we want it to be. So I will start here at the beginning of the plan. I'm not going to go through every page. I believe you, you've received copies of this. It's been on the website for a number of months now as it's been going through the planning commission process. But I'll provide a brief overview of what the plan is and its goals and some of its recommendations. So the goals of the plan are really pretty simple. If you really boil it down, it's to provide adequate access to the future Bonneville Shoreline Trail. In a little more specific detail, we've identified three types of access that seem appropriate for the trail, regional, secondary and local. I'll go over in a minute what each of those types of access are. And then some objectives here in the middle of the page. So providing trailhead access points that are safe and accessible to all people. A minimum of two regional access points, you know, one per four miles of trail, a minimum of three local, at least one per mile of trail. And then identifying preliminary cost estimates or funding opportunities to build these improvements out. This is a context map. I apologize if there's a delay in the presentation, but the, this is kind of the alignment of the Bonneville Shoreline through Salt Lake County, at least through Sandy. The black square is Cottonwood Heights. So you can see the trail alignment itself, you know, we're just one small piece of the puzzle here. This extends north through Salt Lake County and beyond and south as well. But it's been a priority. It's referenced in the city's general plan. It comes up in all the city surveys we do. It will also be a big part of the open space master plan that we're working on. And this is kind of the recommendation in map form of access points, types of access points and potential locations for them. The regional access points are the blue circles there. Those are access points that generally have parking facilities, potentially restrooms. They've got good signage. It's where if you're driving to hike on the trail, you're going to come to one of these regional access points and park there and then hike. The secondary access point, this was actually added after the public open house we had in February. This is a small Forest Service pullout lot right now. It's not fully improved. There's some parking there, but it's minimal improvements. But it's on the Forest Services Plan as exploring, expanding that and using that as some sort of limited trail access. So we've included that as well. Less amenities than, than a full regional access, but more than a local access. And those local access points are these are four, five, six, seven and eight. They are what generated, I would say, 60-plus percent of the public comments we received. These are intended to be pedestrian access only, meant for residents of the neighborhood. No parking facilities, no restrooms, anything like that, very little signage, if any. Just a way for neighborhood residents around the trail to be able to walk from their house and get on the trail without having to drive to a regional access point to do it. And then the next portion of the plan goes through each location. It identifies opportunities and constraints. And while our objectives recommended only two regional access points, we do have a break here, a pretty logical break in Big Cottonwood Canyon Road. So we've identified three, one in the gravel pit and then two at either end between Big and Little Cottonwood Canyon. So I won't go through this in a lot of detail. You can review this plan, but, but the opportunities and constraints here are listed for each access point. Obviously, this one, we spent a little more time on the Ferguson overflow lot. We've got funding to begin building that in the coming months. So that is underway per our old agreement with Salt Lake County. So we will have a good regional access point there. And then I, you know, I think I'll spend a minute on these local access points because they generated a lot of the public feedback we received. You know, we kind of, to identify these, we did a couple of site visits. We looked at aerial imagery and then we got feedback at public open houses. But when, when you look at these points, they, you know, removing property ownership and all else from the equation, they seem like fairly straightforward points that you wouldn't be surprised to find us identifying as a local access. A couple of them are on dead-end streets, so streets that's just dead-end and undeveloped property. A few of them are used as informal trail access currently. You know, a lot of people hike up, up in these areas. They're not dedicated or formal trails per se, but, but they are used fairly regularly. And then others are just at the end of cul-de-sacs, usually next to undeveloped property. At the same time, they are all identified on privately owned property. So that's a common constraint you're going to find on all these local access points is the ownership. And that's something that we would need to address when we identify the preferred location for local access points. It is talking with the property owners. The other major concern that was raised is how do you create a local access point without attracting vehicle traffic parking on the street? And that was one of the major concerns we heard is some hesitancy over these points because of a fear that they will generate traffic through the neighborhood and on-street parking, similar to what we discussed at the last meeting around Ferguson Canyon. So two more local access points for a total of five. And then number nine is just in the vicinity of the piece that is currently under a fundraising campaign by Utah Open Lands, something at the south end of the city that would provide kind of that southern bookend of access to the trail within city boundaries. We then provide a kind of typical, just concept ideas of what each access point could look like. So regional trailhead, and again, this isn't tailored around any specific site or, you know, any scientific calculation of the number of parking stalls needed. But regional trailhead, what you typically see is parking stalls, potentially a restroom, some pavilions, signage, you know, a pretty well-built out improved trail access point. And this is where we had tried to direct any, any regional visitors to the area. And the intent in locating these sites is to locate them a little bit farther away from, you know, right in the center of the neighborhoods. This is a concept, this is up Big Cottonwood Canyon for that secondary access point. Again, not quite as many improvements, maybe a shaped pavilion, fewer parking stalls and trail access. Maybe you don't see a restroom here or quite as many parking stalls. But this site becomes important as we contemplate or try to figure out how we're going to cross the trail across Big Cottonwood Canyon Road. And then this concept is obviously is a little more detailed, just given the work we've needed to do on it. But the Ferguson Canyon overflow lot, this is on the plan as a recommended access point. And this is one that, you know, by contract, we will be implementing. And then the local access points, this is a very simple diagram, but you can see, you know, we've got a residential street that just dead-ends. You know, we're really just showing a trail access point, potentially small wayfinding marker, just a small sign or a small trash can. We don't need those things. The intent here is to make these as nondescript and as minimal as possible. Again, only for the benefit of the neighborhood and the foot traffic in the area. And I think along with these, we would need to come up with designs or recommendations for how to prohibit these becoming de facto regional access points when the other ones are full or if it's more convenient. Because we don't, we don't want to see, you know, the, the dead-end roads becoming parking lots. That's not what these are intended to do. Then it goes into just some typical amenities. I won't spend too much time on this. And the next section of the plan just details, you know, why we arrived at the findings we did. Some of the background, this was done, this plan was developed by city staff and then a steering committee made up of a few members of the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. So that committee was very instrumental in the preparation of this plan. We held a public open house in February. That was, that was well-attended. Some of the public comments are attached to this plan that we received at that open house. A lot of the major concerns, you can see at the bottom, access, trail alignment itself, which we understand is a concern, but is not the main focus of this plan. Privacy, especially for those local access points, and then traffic and parking. And then this just details some of the analysis, how we arrived at, you know, one, one local access point per mile or one regional access point per four miles of trail. Again, it was based on observation, based on opportunities in the area. There's not necessarily a best practice out there or a standard for a large regional trail of how much access it should have. But it can hurt a trail if you don't have enough access. So, so access is very important. And then again, just substantiating some of the previous policies that have been in place, dating back to the 2005 general plan, multiple city surveys, Butlerville Days, public comments from 2017, multiple open space, open houses and the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, this plan's open house. The Bonneville Shoreline Trail itself is, is very clearly a city priority. So figuring out access is key to making this a reality. And the next portion of the plan, I won't spend too much time. It's just going over the goals and objectives. Again, it really boils down to we want to provide safe and equitable access. We want to minimize the impact of those local access points on the neighborhoods and strategically locate these in places that they will be fully utilized. And then this just kind of quantifies the types of improvements that we would want to see at each different access point. This is represented pretty well in the plan, in the rendering. So, you know, the regional trailheads are going to have the most amenities built at them. The local access points will have very few. We're recommending landscaping and the finish and the aesthetics of these access points be, you know, low maintenance, but also in line with the natural aesthetic of the area. So natural vegetation, you know, making sure they're high-quality designs. And then we go through each location in specific detail here, which I won't spend time on right now. I believe the last section of the plan is preliminary cost estimates and different funding opportunities. There's a table attached that provides cost estimates based on, you know, per mile of trail and the different, the extent of improvements of the trail. I'm always a little hesitant to dive too much into cost estimates in a master plan because this changes drastically over time and new opportunities will come and go. But then funding opportunities, you can look at things like impact fees. We do not currently charge a trail impact fee or a park impact fee. So that would be a policy consideration. Bonds are listed as a policy consideration as well. There are special taxes, there are grants, multiple grants out there for outdoor recreation and those types of amenities. And then just in the, the standard budgeting process is another way. Development agreements, so as properties develop in the areas surrounding these points of interest, we can work together to require those improvements to be made. Public-private partnerships and then private donations and fundraising, kind of like you're seeing with Utah Open Lands. So this, this is a, I won't spend time on this right now, but a rough cost estimate of, you know, the types of improvements you're going to see at each type of trail. Just to give you a sense of, you know, at least in today's value, what these trail improvements would cost. And then at the very end is the public comments from the open house. You have also received the public comments that were received at the planning commission over two meetings. There were about 80 public comments, so a lot of feedback on this. The Parks Trails and Open Space Committee recommended approval of the plan as is. And then the planning commission, they made a recommendation at their previous meeting to approve the plan, but they recommended two conditions. They have not been incorporated in the plan yet. There are conditions for the council to consider. One is that the, the current stalls that are at the Ferguson Canyon trailhead, right up next to the trail, be reassigned as accessible stalls or even eliminated when that overflow lot is, is constructed. So that the overflow lot that's being constructed down below is the only place to park if you're using that trail. The, the commissions, I think, finding behind this is it would eliminate the cars going up there, turning around and circling through those streets, even when those parking stalls fill up. If everyone knew to park below and you have to hike up through the neighborhood, then I think that would help that problem. The other recommendation from the planning commission was of the five local access points, that the city should only ever construct one of them, just to alleviate the concerns of many of the residents that live near those points. They didn't specify which one, they, they're just, you know, they- They didn't specify which one, they just, you know, they said that would be up to the city to determine based on opportunity and further analysis. But those were the two conditions or recommendations beyond what is in this draft plan that were recommended by the planning commission. With those in place, they unanimously recommended approval of the plan. So now it's to the city council, we'll plan to take additional public feedback or public comment on this at the next meeting. And after that, it will be on the agenda for action, probably beginning in October.
All right, Mike, thank you. And just want to give a shout out and appreciation to our Parks Trails and Open Space Committee and Christine, work with that group. And that's why we created that committee is to give us that insight and feel on major things like this. So my appreciation to them. Any questions of Mike regarding this plan as we move forward? Christine?
Thanks, Mike. Do you mind just opening the document again to the regional and local access points?
Yep. Up and then I'll share my screen.
I think my one question was on the regional access point being at the land that Utah Open Space is considering acquiring. I just wondered if, I, it was hard for me to see all the costs, but if cost is an issue, is it possible to take nine, move it up to the parking at Little Cottonwood Canyon where the little triangle is, and then create that change? Yes. And then take nine and make that a little two, a red dot. So it's a secondary access opportunity so that, I mean, there could still potentially be parking, but that we focus parking at locations that perhaps there might be bus stops in the summer or things like that. And use that as more of a secondary access opportunity. Did that come up at all?
No, it didn't. I had a conversation with a resident of using that park and ride lot up the canyon. We certainly could explore that. That a few challenges there is it's outside of city boundaries and it's on Forest Service-owned property. So maybe a little bit more difficult to achieve our desired vision on that property. We certainly could consider a scaled back trailhead. And I think even within the context of defining that as a regional trailhead, you know, there's still some flexibility in deciding how many parking stalls and exactly which amenities are appropriate. And that's kind of based on context, which is why the, you know, the design or the site plan are labeled as concept and are very generic. So I think even labeling it as regional, we could look at scaling that one back even when compared to the Ferguson one or the parking at the gravel pit. So we're open to identifying that one differently, but we do want to make sure it's highlighted as some sort of opportunity there.
I wonder, and this is the thought I just had, because that does keep coming up. Maybe we do a nine A and a nine B at that other location. Or if there's a nine C that was across the road, understanding that they are not in the city, but maybe potential would work within the plan. I don't know if that makes sense or if that accomplishes what Councilmember Michael's after, but that might be another way to deal with it. Is just identifying that there is something else close, but it may not be the ultimate best answer. But, you know, we've got like nine A, B, and C, something like that. Might be worth looking at or considering.
Yeah, and what I'll say with nine, I think it's probably a stretch to assume that applies to that park and ride lot. But it's not referenced to a specific property there. So it is identified as that general area on the southern edge of the city. So if we wanted to include reference to that park and ride lot outside of city boundaries, we can add that in. But I think the nine as it is does cover, you know, it's not specific to that Utah Open Lands property. Certainly that's an opportunity there, but there's the Salt Lake City property and the undeveloped property across the street as well. I think those would all fit under where that's currently designated.
Mike, I have a quick question. Is one, are one, three, and nine, are they completely serviced by us as being that they're regional? Maintenance-wise?
Well, number three is, we know that right now. Number one, not necessarily. And I think this can be discussed further when the gravel pit application comes to council. It doesn't designate who maintains or who operates these. And I think when it's part of a private development, then certainly there's some room for discussion there. I would anticipate number three will be, and number nine, it depends on the final location of that, but that likely would be maintained by the city, but not necessarily.
I need to feedback to you, Mike, is that number nine, if you try and compare it to number three, number three is a pretty intense regional access. Number nine may want to look more like number two, and that's something I think we can pursue in further discussion. I personally applaud the planning commission for looking at proposing to change the parking at the current access to Ferguson Canyon and try and do whatever we can to move it down to Wasatch Boulevard to protect that neighborhood. I think that makes good sense. Go ahead, Christine.
I had another question, Mike. I know there was concern from everybody that sent me an email about the local access trailheads, which is interesting to me because I think many of those people also are users of those local access trailheads, and I happen to live on one of those, I think number six. And we love when people walk by and are heading into the hills. But do you think some of that concern would be alleviated if alongside or included in this master plan? We spoke of permit, a permit parking plan will be considered by the city? If implement, you know, if these location, these trailhead locations are chosen? Because it seems like the main fury came from what was happening at Ferguson and the fear that it would just permeate through the neighborhood. And if there was something that we could do, maybe proactively to allay that concern, then maybe people would be more amenable to having more local access points.
Yeah, I think at this master plan level, I mean, maybe some wording we could add that I think would help that without tying us down too specifically, would be to say something, you know, prior to implementation of or construction of a local access point or even design, policies should be explored that mitigate, you know, parking concerns or traffic congestion or anything like that. We can provide examples without saying, you know, parking, a permit parking program should be implemented here.
Yeah, no, that's exactly right. I think that would be great if we could consider.
We can do that.
And then my last question is, I know that, I know I asked this and it was probably a burdensome task, but it sounded like there were about 80 commenters just eyeballing it. Would you say that most of the commenters were co-located with the edge of our city on the bench there? Or was it mostly all District Four residents? Was it mostly this immediate neighborhood? What, did you have, did you have a sense of that? I know that'd be burdensome to map all 80 commenters, but I was just curious if you had a sense.
Yeah, I think the breakdown is probably pretty similar to the breakdown of the actual open house. A lot of concerns of residents right around the local access points. Quite a few concerns about the trail itself and, you know, saying it should go higher on the hill or it shouldn't go, it shouldn't be built at all. And then a good chunk of concerns about Ferguson Canyon and what to do with that area. But I think the, probably the prevailing negative comment at least. And there were, there were a decent number of positive supportive comments as well, so I don't want to discount that. But the prevailing comment was concerns of specific local access points, most likely by residents that live very close to those specific local access points.
Thank you.
So Mike, what's the next step for the council?
I've heard a few recommendations. I can take a shot at incorporating them or we can discuss this further. The next step is to present this for public comment at the next council meeting.
Yeah, I think there are definitely a couple of recommendations, a couple of clarifications, a couple of areas of support. But I would love to have that public comment period. And so as far as an action item, that's down the road.
Yeah, I think we would plan on taking public comment next time and then depending on how that goes or if there's more feedback, scheduling that for action in October sometime.
Are some of these suggestions and comments that have been made, are those some things you could make to it quickly and get that out for public review? Or are you going to limit the public comment to this document as it currently stands?
No, I mean, at this point, public can comment at any meeting. We'll just have a dedicated citizen comment item at the next meeting. I'll work with the consultant to edit this and get those changes made and get it published back on the website right away. And then if there's a lot of public comments at the next meeting and council wants to continue that, we certainly can.
Thank you. Christine, you had another question or comment?
Oh, I was just going to pull up the newsletter because I couldn't remember. Did we, did we include in this current newsletter that we're accepting public comment at council meeting for this plan on the front page? I just can't remember.
I think it was on the calendar as.
I think it's on, I think it is on the calendar. Mike just said that, so we can verify that though.
Okay.
September 15th is on trail access plan, public comment, yeah.
But what does it, what does it say again? Just, it doesn't say Bonneville Shoreline, it just says trail access.
Trail access plan, public comment, it's on the calendar on the front page. All right, any further comments? I know we're running out of time, but we got one more item to discuss before we close and go into our business meeting.
I think if I can ask, I heard some good feedback from the council tonight. Would you like me to incorporate the planning commission's recommendations as well?
I would, or at least as a bullet pointed at end, I'm saying these are what the planning commission recommended. So that if someone's read the other thing, they can at least hit the bullet points. These are recommended changes so that they have them available. If you can't get them in the document, at least have a pullout sheet that says these are the changes that have been recommended.
I'm supportive of the first bullet. The second one, I'd like to hear public comment before we eliminate only the one local access. I'm not saying I wouldn't support it, but I think it might be premature to limit to one only right now without having additional public comment. Christine, you're closer to that.
I'm in full agreement with you, Mayor. I think that, again, it's a plan and that these local access points aren't all go, may never all be implemented. But if you take them away, I think it's hard to put them back. I just think that's.
But I think the Ferguson Canyon, and I think that's totally logical and makes perfect sense, so I, yeah.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. Hopefully we have a couple of minutes left. Matt, you're going to talk about Capitol Road project adjustments?
Yeah, real quick, Mayor and Council, thank you again for hearing me. This is about Scottish Drive. As you know, Scottish Drive, well, the Scottish Drive subdivision or area we're calling it is under construction right now for storm drain and waterways and some curb and gutter. The original, we budgeted around $775,000 for that project. We are under contract and to date, our contract with change orders and everything that's happening is around $460,000. We have a, we have a remaining amount of our budget. And what is happening right now, we don't have enough remaining to go through and complete all of the Scottish Drive subdivision. We would, but we are looking to finish that project. And in order to finish that project, we will be bringing forward to you some budget adjustments. And the next, and Scott will be able to tell you when the next budget adjustment meeting is. But we'll be bringing forward some savings that we've had this year from other capital projects that we'll be using to cover the cost to finish the Scottish Drive subdivision project. And we will probably be using a little bit, not a lot, of some of the money from this year's capital projects so that we can finalize the whole of Scottish Drive subdivision right now. Yeah, we're talking about paving it and doing curb and gutter repairs as well as some ADA ramps that need to go in for the construction. So yeah, so we're looking to finish out the entire subdivision. And like I said, there'll be a budget adjustment for some line items for some savings from this year that you'll see, well, I say this fiscal year, I'm talking about the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Those monies will be coming forward into this. And this project itself is actually part of the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. If you'll remember, we got started on it late because we stopped everything for a while because we were unsure of what was happening with the economy and the COVID issues that are going on. So in a nutshell, we'll be finishing the project, but we'll be bringing forward to you budget adjustments to show you where the remaining funds will be coming from.
Now, we appreciate it when you can expand or take care of a project and do it from your own savings. So I appreciate that efficiency. Any comments or questions of Matt bringing that back?
Okay, thank you.
One comment, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Referring back to Stormwater, just a request and hopefully everyone will agree with this. I think it would be appropriate as well as we move forward on that public hearing or public comment period on Stormwater or for further discussion. I'd like to understand, so that we don't have a misrepresentation, how much has been done over the years? I think it'd be important for our constituents to know that as a city, we've not been idle. Let's talk about the many projects that have happened over the years and now it's time to take a leap or whatever it is, just whatever facts are.
Whatever, whatever the numbers are, we will bring them forward. Something really quick, I mean, I know we're short on time, but on the Stormwater, if I can just back up a hair. I don't mean to kick up any kind of firestorm here, but what I did want you to be aware of as a council is that we do have issues that need to be dealt with. It's not a thing that we, we just need to, it's like Councilmember Bracken was saying. It's like we've finally embraced the road issue and as a council, you're funding those things. I think we have the same issue we're looking at in Stormwater. We've done bits and pieces along the way and we've made some progress, but we still, we have a need and we need to start a funding process annually to take care of that. And when we don't have a funding process for the Stormwater, we're actually taking money away from road projects when we do these things or other needs that the city might have because the roads come out of the general funds and the Stormwater is coming out of the general fund. So that's where we are. I think as far as, these are very old projects. So going back and trying to find or point a finger, say a contractor didn't do this or that. That's not, they built if according to standards that existed at the time. I have no doubt, or I would hope so. So I think at this point, we move forward and figure out what we need to do.
I understand, it's just part of the education is educating us on what the needs are, but I can also give the facts as to what we've been doing. And obviously we can do more and we can do that in a lot of areas, but just appreciate that education as well. Okay. We, let's try to think now, the next item on the agenda is just a review of calendar and upcoming events. I just wanted to make a comment to staff and I know Ann Edgell's not on, but thank those who were involved in the car show parade that went through our city and went through Midvale, got a lot of public positive comments on that. I thought that was nice to have something done in our community, even though we have the pandemic. So shout out to those people. And just as an FYI, as far as calendars, I don't know if anybody else has a personal calendar item. I will be out of town the first week of October. So Mr. Bracken, as Mayor Pro Tem, if you would, you will need to chair that meeting for me. I will not be available. I'll be fine.
Thanks for the warning.
Yeah, I thought I'd give a warning to everyone, so especially on the agenda too, that I will not be here on, I think it's October 6th? Something like that.
Something like.
Yeah.
I would, just because I have noticed that there are a couple of attendees at this work session. I have a town hall scheduled on Zoom on Thursday and an in-person one at City Hall on Saturday morning. I've been requested by a couple of people to have them. Christine did a Zoom meeting this last week that I thought went really, really, really well. There's some people who said they'd prefer that and there's others who said they'd prefer in person, like what Talia. like what Tally has been doing. And so I decided I'd try one of each and see how I went this week, but those are coming up and they can go to the website for those.
I applaud those efforts. I think as we've all been talking about, communication is critical to any organization and the more the better. So I applaud those efforts. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn our work session and reconvene at seven o'clock in our business meeting. Anybody want to unmute and do it?
I enjoyed just staring at you all, so I wasn't going to do it.
I second that, Mayor.
All right. That wasn't a motion, but I guess I just got made a motion at that second.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Then I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by Councilmember Bracken, that we adjourn our work session and we'll reconvene at seven o'clock in our business meeting. All in favor, please say aye or put your thumb up.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous with the minutes. See you at seven o'clock.